Turkish Wind Energy Association. The energy supply crisis experienced by the EU in recent years has revealed once again the risk of being dependent on external resources in energy for our country. Regional wars and the pandemic have once again reminded how fragile it is to rely on import-based supply chains in energy. The countries fighting the climate change have adopted the Paris Agreement to limit the global warming by 1.5 degrees Celsius. Right at this point, we consider the supply security, supply chain, and the climate objectives as national issues. And as TUREP, we see the solution in wind power, because in our country, wind power is a never-ending renewable energy source with 70% domestic supply. The installed wind power capacity of our country is 12 gigawatt. And thanks to around 15 billion euro investment, with an addition of 3 gigawatt installed power per year, our installed power will reach 30 gigawatt by 2030. We have all the means, know-how, technical and infrastructure for this. Such investments can add to our country 20 billion euro worth clean energy. Our sector today exports to 49 countries at a value of 1.5 billion euros while creating jobs for 25,000 people. On the other side, the EU aims to make a triple increase in her installed capacity to reach 30 gigawatt. As TUREP, in order to contribute to our country's goals for the year 2023, on the occasion of the centenary anniversary of our country, we also would like to put forward a vision project with a civil society initiative. Our new board of directors conducted many significant events to promote our projects in our country and Europe and to explain the recent developments in the first eight months of their mandate. In April, we attended the Wind Europe Bilbao Fair. In June, we held a technical visit to Izmir. And in September, we opened the TUREP Turkey Pavilion in Hamburg Wind Energy Fair. We held a very intensive public diplomacy for all of these, and we have started to see the repercussions of our work on the field as well. In addition to 10-gigawatt wind and 10-gigawatt solar energy project in the Tasseli Plateau, we have worked on a project proposal that can include a hydrogen electrolysis and storage facility, and it has been submitted to the relevant authorities. Izmir has become the production and distribution hub of Turkey with 10,000 jobs and 1 billion euro equipment export per year. And we have started to work to establish the Çandale Port and the Integrated Clean Energy Specialized Organized Industrial Zone in Izmir. With realization of all these projects, special investment areas can be formed for investors, and Turkey can have a specialized port, including an offshore base as well. As TUREP, we will keep on working to add more to our country. Wind of Izmir, wind of Turkey. Turkish Wind Energy Association. Now, we will start the ministerial session. Mr. İbrahim Erdil will moderate the session as the Chair of TUREP. Mr. Abdullah Tanjan, Mr. Mehmet Fatih Kacar as the two Deputy Ministries. Deputy Minister of Energy and Deputy Minister of Industry and Technology will be the panel. Distinguished guests, welcome again. Mr. Abdullah Tanjan, our Deputy Minister of Energy, and Mr. Mehmet Fatih Kacar. We have organized this ministerial session. Actually, you can consider it as the continuation of our meeting last evening and this morning. Actually, we asked many questions to them, and we have compiled those questions from our association. Now, we would like to talk about these questions. Actually, we just want to receive the answers to the questions of our industry. These are your questions, and on behalf of you, I'll be asking these questions to distinguished Deputy Ministers. Welcome. Thank you. It was the topic yesterday evening, and it will be the topic of today. There is a huge increase in the capacity, which has already been explained, and you tried to make an explanation of this yesterday evening. And the year 2023, we had an objective of 20 gigawatt, including the solar and the geothermal energy along with wind. And for 2030, we have the net zero-carbon objective, as declared by our president. So what is the plan of the Ministry of Energy and Natural Resources? İbrahim Bey, thank you very much for this organization. As the ministry, in all our regulations, in all our policies, we have always wanted to take into consideration the opinions and the requests of the industry. We try to define the principles and the rules altogether. And the organizations like this very one is a very good example of such an approach. So you bring us together on the same place with the industry, by which we can receive and we can learn about the opinion and the requests of the industry. If there is anything that we need to improve in our regulations, we learn about it, we make our negotiations here, so this is very useful. As you know, we have the electricity market legislation number 6446, and according to this legislation, our ministry is assigned to organize plans for 20 years in terms of the supply security. And by the end of this year, we need to declare this long-term plan. And since the enactment of this legislation, our experts have been working on this. But of course, we are receiving the expectations of growth from all other relevant ministries. We also get information regarding the changes and the figures from different industries: chemical industry, textile industry, food industry, and et cetera. We are trying to get the projections for two decades ahead. And also, we have the population growth, and there is an increase in the consumption associated with the population growth. So we take this into consideration. The economic growth projections and the pricing, pricing for the carbon, coal prices, natural gas prices, nuclear energy, source developments and the source prices, and the hydrogen issue, the share of hydrogen in the total picture, how is it going to be shaped? Emission reduction commitments have been made, and for our, as our country, by the year 2053, we have the net zero emission target. And in order to meet these commitments, how much energy do we need to generate out of which source we are looking at them? The annual investment costs, we look at them. So we have all studied, we have all analyzed these questions, and we have received the presentations regarding all these questions. And we are also in coordination with the plannings of other ministries, and we have conducted all our preparation. And I believe that in November, in a couple of weeks, we will be declaring the Turkish National Energy Plan for the next two decades. And maybe for the year 2053, we will be adopting it and we will be sharing it with the public. And in this plan, we will see wind energy, solar energy, nuclear energy, the shares of particular energy sources within the entire picture, and on yearly basis, how much addition do we need to make in order to reach our target? So all these things will be seen clearly in this plan, and the industry will be able to see this plan as well. Rather than giving some figures, we can simply and we can safely say that the largest share within this plan will be the renewable energy. This plan needs to be at least for the coming 20 years, so it's going to be extending to 2040, 2045. And it's going to be mainly about renewable energy, because in the year 2053, our target is to reach zero emission. Therefore, the main headline in this plan will be the renewable energy and mainly the wind and the solar energy, including hydrogen and offshore. Yes, yes, they will be a part of the plan. The mechanism alternatives in order to accommodate these targets, so the licensed, storage,[715.12][715.12]integrated, will they be in the plan? Or are we going to continue with YECA? In this plan, actually, it's not about going with or going without YECA. The main elements of this plan is to create a plan for renewable energy for the coming two decades or four decades. So our targets for the renewable energy in the coming 20 years, 40 years, and when we share this plan with the public, the industry will see it. Thank you. Fatih Bey, Mr. Deputy Minister. Now, our question is for the Ministry of Industry. Turkey has made a huge progress in terms of renewable energy, and we are growing in terms of industry. We have midterm and long-term objectives. And also, European Union and the world have a big problem about energy supply, and the International Energy Agency is asking a question in their latest report. Is this crisis a threat or an opportunity for renewable energy? And at the end of the analysis, it concludes that it's an opportunity for renewable energy. So when you look at the numbers of European Union countries, mainly Germany, we can see it. So what kind of an opportunity do you consider from the perspective of Ministry of Industry? And what kind of a strategy should we expect? Thank you very much. I would like to thank Turkish Wind Energy Association for organizing this congress in your person, and I also would like to thank your board of directors. Yesterday evening and this morning, these speeches and the deliberations have been very useful. Actually, we are all in an intensive effort for renewable energy. So because Turkey has an initiative to grow based on investment and export, and as these sectors are developing and evolving, we need to renew our steps and approaches as well. In the past, when we talk about the local production, it was only limited to enlargement of the production capacity. But today, it's all about the national technologies, national research and development, having the critical technologies, and ensuring the supply security. So this is the new approach. And as the Ministry of Industry and Technology, our agenda is not limited to producing all of them locally, but we also would like to have the supply security by which our industry can have access to energy. And with the Green Deal of European Union, the industry should have a safe and sustainable access to clean energy. So in recent period of time, these are our main objectives. Actually, we consider all these processes as a window of opportunity for Turkey. Among your members, there are technology producers, R&amp;D companies, manufacturers of the equipments. We are in constant contact with them. Turkey has developed an important capability, and we see that that capability has clustered in this region, and it seems that all these investments will continue to grow both in Turkey and in Europe. And every peculiar region will have their own plans, because some of the countries have already conducted onshore investments, so it is time for them to go for offshore. And some of them have already conducted solar and wind energy, they will go for other kinds of energy. So for Turkey, in the recent period of time, we are increasing our incentives for the local producers, and we have declared a program in which we are giving incentives to the R&amp;D regarding energy efficiency. Many companies have started to enjoy this, and in the period to come, we will continue giving incentives to these kind of investments. And Izmir is in Region 1 in terms of our incentives, so relatively, the incentives are lower in this city. However, when we talk about wind energy and the equipment production, we give priority to this. If there are some critical technology investments or high-risk technology investments, so we can give higher incentives to them. We are ready to this. And in the morning session, in the opening session, our minister has already expressed, and it was also mentioned in the short video before this very session. And we also had this celebration yesterday evening. The Çandale Port issue and how we can act for this. We are trying to create a roadmap for this. So it seems that there is a significant potential. And in this region currently... If the investment area is 1.5 million square meter, then the existing investors are already ready, and we can also activate the port as well. But we need collaboration here. As Mr. Minister already said, TOG was a very good example of collaboration. For years, people did not believe in it, and it was just considered as a dream. But now, it has come to real life with collaboration of the private sector under the leadership of the public sector. Why don't we replicate this kind of best practices and good examples? TUREP can, maybe TUREP can take an initiative in terms of the Çandale Port and the Specialized Clean Energy Industrial Zone. Maybe others, maybe the other stakeholders can take initiatives as well. We will continue to work on this, but we consider this area critical. We believe that Turkey should be a production hub for renewable energy equipments, and in the years to come, storage will be a very important topic. And Mr. Deputy Minister of Energy explained this very clearly yesterday evening, actually. It seems that we will not be able to have the growth in wind and solar energy if we do not have the storage capacity. Currently, we are making investment on the battery technologies. TOG is making a investment. The Koch Group is preparing to make investment, and Asper Sun is also getting ready. But a big part of these investments will be about mobility, so their chemistry will be NMC-oriented. We need some additional investment actually, and the most privileged investment incentives have been given to the battery investment so far in Turkey. Maybe people did not figure it out, but for long years, Turkish industry discussed the cash incentives. In Romania, in Hungary, it was said that there are these kind of cash incentives. However, in Turkey, it's not that way. And TOG and Farasis will make a battery investment, and for this, we are giving cash incentive to this. So from our treasury, we will be paying a certain share of this investment in cash. I don't know the years, 1980s, but this is going to be the first in recent years. And this cash incentive, we will keep this door open. Hydrogen or offshore investments or special equipment production, maybe it can be a part of this, is it possible? We look at this issue from this perspective. What are our competitor countries doing, and what do we need to offer to our investors in order to compete? We do not want to create a general practice, but we want to go case by case. If we want to be competitive, the regulation enables us. So if these are big-scale, large-scale investments, we can do it with the approval of our president. And all these investments we are talking about, they are actually, they are actually billion-dollar investments. So we are open to evaluate all the options, because Turkey is now making a national technology initiative. So we want to create the supply security in the strongest manner in her own territory, and we will try our best to keep all the channels open for this. I am a member of the Board of Asas Sun, and our deputy director generals and the directors are already here. Asas Sun has an excitement and has an enthusiasm here as well, because they will be the pioneer of a national brand. But I want to do it in a collaboration. And that's the main trend in our board of directors. So if we can see the desire from the industry to become a stakeholder of this, Asas Sun will be happy. And it's, I believe, it's not going to be more difficult than TOG, because the existing capabilities are really strong. The only thing we need to do is to have faith in this, to believe in this, because the domestic market will be our primary objective. But in the end, your strength will come from export. That's also the case for TOG. Yes, we like it very much, but we will consider ourselves successful only if we can export it. So I just want to talk about this as the beginning. Thank you. Starting from this incentive issues, I would like to ask this question. In recent years especially, the investments started to accelerate after 2014, 2015. Actually, this is because the incentives for the locally-produced, domestically-produced equipments are being incentivized. We have seven wind factories, four tower factories in Turkey, there are lots of side industries. And the incentives have been revised to be in Turkish lira. And we all know that there are some problems regarding this kind of projects and their incentives. We have YECA projects, there are some requirements to become domestic and local for them. The Energy Ministry and the Industry Ministry... The industry thinks that there must be a requirement for domestically-produced equipments, and it should be incentivized by the ministries. What do you think about this? As the ministry, under the supply security of the renewable energy, we attach great importance to this supply security, because in the field of energy, it can be natural gas, it can be electricity. Our biggest priority is the supply security. After supply security, we also attach importance to domestic production. And actually, this is a part of the supply security. If our equipments are not manufactured locally and domestically, we cannot safely claim that we have the supply security. Therefore, in terms of the generators, the wind turbines, I hope TIRH will be manufacturing generators as well. And the solar panels. So the more we can produce the electricity generation equipments domestically, the better we can claim that we have the supply security. The equipments used for electricity generation, if they accommodate the condition of being domestically-produced, we are giving additional incentives to them. Actually, in YECA, there are also conditions for this, and it was embedded in the price actually. It was an indirect incentive or indirect support to manufacturing the equipments locally. And we have, we have seen the results of it, as you have mentioned. Today, in Turkey, our manufacturers are manufacturing many of these equipments locally and domestically in Turkey. And they are not only used in our power plants in Turkey, but we have started to export them to many countries in Europe and in the rest of the world. And the Ministry of Industry is now considering this kind of incentives in energy sector as in all other sectors. So we believe that this kind of a support will continue for the domestically-produced equipments, but from time to time, the conditions may change, and that may require revision of the incentive mechanism. And this is the case for all the industries. And if the wind industry conveys such a need to us, as we said, we have the approach to define the rules based on consultation with the industry. We always make this consultation. So our objective is to improve the situation in Turkey, and by doing so, we want to make contribution in supply security. And we believe that we have made progress, progress in this. There are lots of equipment manufacturers in wind energy, mainly in this very region in Izmir. And manufacturing capacity is very high in our country. So in consultation with our Ministry of Industry as well, we always consider how to improve and how to further develop this kind of... we always consider how to improve and how to further develop this kind of incentives and the mechanisms. We will always be, we will always be in pursuit of this and we will continue our supports. And Mr. President already talked about this. There is a significant number of applications for license for storage. And hopefully, we will see them translated into reality as investment of the renewable energy. In the past, for example, using locally produced equipments in renewable energy storage plants. Can we consider it as well? Because Mr. President already talked about an application amounting up to 20,000 megawatts. So how do you consider to support it on energy generation? Yesterday evening in our meeting, we have already explained why we do need storage. And I want to repeat it here because it will be useful. Because electricity should be in a balance throughout the day. So the, the, the production should meet the consumption in a balance. When consumption goes up, we can give instruction to the power plants to produce more. And also, when the consumption goes down during the day, Teğhş gives instruction to the power plants to reduce the production. So there is a round the clock management of the production in order to balance it with the consumption. And the wind and solar, the control of it is not in our hands. These are energy sources which you can not stop. So in terms of create this balance within the grid, it may be a problem. So there is a capacity limit. So it may not be possible to connect all the wind and all the solar power to the grid. It may create a risk in terms of management of the system. But on the other side, our objective is to accommodate our energy need out of renewable energies as much as possible. You know, there is a commercial advertisement saying that if you cannot control the force, it's not a force. So this is the approach. So storage is a solution to this problem. Therefore, if I can store that energy, I can manage the grid. Therefore, in the period to come, both in the wind and solar energy investments, the investments with storage facilities will gain more and more importance. In line with what I've already said, as we are talking about supply security in terms of manufacturing the equipments locally and domestically in Turkey. And that's also the case in storage. So domestic production, domestic manufacturing is also important. And Fatih Bey already said, we have electric mobility vehicles. And in Europe, we see that there are some companies declaring, announcing that they will not manufacture traditional cars anymore. They will produce electric cars from now on. So there is a huge market there. So in electricity, as the renewables, we give importance to solar and wind power. So we need big investment for storage facilities in order to solve this problem of balance of consumption and production. So we can work with the Ministry of Industry together to solve this problem. And we can define the rules collectively. Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to add anything? Yes, on behalf of our ministry, you have already extended an important request to us. Definitely, we plan, we think, and we hope that it's going to be done that way. The, in the power plant investments, there are some conditions for domestic production. Therefore, this industry started to rise in our country. Definitely, we need to provide some advantage for the local investments so that the battery investments in Turkey can be made. I would like to highlight something. Yes, we are talking about investments, but we are talking about the critical technologies now. Therefore, we need to have the capability of research and development. In the battery investment so far, it's a fact that we are aiming at manufacturing the technologies of the foreigners in our country in some certain processes. But we should also target, we should also aim at having the R and D here. The foreigners can let you manufacture these technologies, but they always make you follow them a couple of steps behind. So if we want to catch up with them, we need to accelerate our capability of research and development. I just wanted to highlight this because I believe that there is a room for progress in this. And you also mentioned the offshore thing. Yes, Turkey needs to make a decision. Yes, we have the potential to make further investments in onshore, in the territorial side. Therefore, the offshore may not be, seem so close for Turkey. Actually, in the morning session, it has already been mentioned, we have the potential, we have the capability. But as long as we can provide cheaper electricity on the onsite plants, it will continue this way. But on the other side, there is a market being shaped in the world. And if you want to take our share from that market, we need to get accelerated as well. And we need to enable capabilities for our domestic producers. We need to create a domestic market for them to, to, to have some know-how in terms of the technology and equipment manufacturing. Another point I'd like to raise is hydrogen. Yes, there are some companies who are coming to us in order to make investment in hydrogen. And Ministry of Energy will probably put forward a national hydrogen plan very soon. But it's, it's obvious that Europe is going to intensify her efforts towards this end after this winter, which will, which will be a difficult one for Europe. And Turkey needs to, Turkey needs to develop the storage capability. Currently, we need to accelerate our investments for renewable energy in order to accommodate our own, our own needs. But we cannot write a development story if we sell our hydrogen, which we produce domestically to Europe. We need to first make it domestically in order to accommodate our own need. Actually, in this topic, the private sector accelerated this process by drafting a legislation and just submitting to the public authority. So I would like to share this. Actually, I hope the private sector will be ahead of the public sector. If it happens, it will accelerate the things. Thank you. I would like to ask you one final question. Abdullah Bey, I'd like to ask this question to you. Our industry requests some regulations regarding the licensing from your ministry, from the Ministry of Industry, from the Ministry of Culture and Tourism, and etc. And very recently, the Yekah areas have been regulated. Should we take it under this headline? Or currently in the parliament, is there any plan of the Energy Ministry in order to facilitate the processes of licensing for the investors? Currently, in the legislation on which we are working, there is no such a preparation. If I'm not mistaken, if I understand you rightfully, the investors are getting tired in terms of the licensing processes, both in terms of the preparation of the process and also the cost of the process. So the Energy Ministry can be the authority for this? Actually, yes, this is something similar with the building development. Yes, I, I believe you want that the Energy Ministry will be authorized to give these licenses. And the investors should not waste so much time to get the license. And the licensing could be facilitated this. Currently, in the current legislative efforts, we do not have such a plan. And it, I do not believe that, I do not consider that it is a topic on which the Energy Ministry will have the final word. Because it's also in the mandate, within the mandate of the Ministry of Environment and Urbanization. Of course, we can talk about it. In Tourism Ministry, we have similar things. They can also, they can also make their own building development plans in the Ministry of Tourism. But this kind of requests, this kind of suggestions should be, should be translated into much more concrete structures so that we can work on them. And yesterday, Adnan Bey also said that the renewable energy legislation, it was proposed by the industry itself. And with their effort, it was adopted in the parliament. And probably you will ask this question later, but I want to tell it in advance. About hydrogen, we are working on a hydrogen strategy paper, which will be finalized by the end of this year. But this is a fairly new area, fairly new field. And in the recent years, you know, the private sector made suggestions, as was the case for the renewable energy. And therefore, I, I think that the private sector can also make their proposal regarding hydrogen. We are open to this. What kind of legislative, what kind of regulation infrastructure do we need so that we can fully tap our potential in hydrogen? It is very obvious that hydrogen is one of the most important renewable energy sources. Many countries have already started to work on this. So we should not get late in terms of the regulations and the legislation. Therefore, we are open to any input to come from the industry. That would be very useful for us. Thank you. Actually, I just wanted to ask the question as the representative of Turep. And I have a question on behalf of the industry. It's about the export and export incentives. There are international manufacturers. And when we use their equipments regarding the part of the equipment which originates from European Union or which originates from China, we can get some additional financial support. Today, finance is very expensive in the world, not only in TL, but also in FX as well. So the costs are increasing. Maybe if we can have supports regarding the finance that can really alleviate the pressure on the investors. So in order to increase the manufacturing and export capability of the industry, it may be Eximbank or it may be cooperation with international finance institutions. I believe that you are receiving this kind of applications, not only from our industry, but from all others as well. So what do you think about this issue as the Ministry of Industry? And how can we implement this so that we can facilitate the processes for the equipments, not only for the wind energy or solar energy, but also the storage of the hydrogen as well? Let me, thank you. Let me start with what people expect from the government. There is one thing we need to be aware. In the last three or four years, there is a turbulence in the world. And this is not going to come to an end very soon. There is a supply chain crisis, raw material crisis, and the chip crisis. They are all intermingled and they are having impacts on many industries. And it's highly probable that these impacts will continue to persist in the years to come. No one here, I believe, can, can, can claim that there will not be any crisis regarding the raw materials to produce batteries. And five years ago, 10 years ago, if we had conducted this meeting, actually, these risks are much more closer and probable risks. So collectively, I believe we need to take a new perspective. Regarding these critical products, we need to make prioritization and we need to accelerate our investments for them. If you can help the public authorities for the prioritization, that would be great. You can do it with your suggestions, recommendations, that would be very much guiding for the public authority. We are really exerting efforts. I just made a reference to our program in which we asked for nine strategic products with high technology levels. We import 60 billion US dollar, we do 60 billion US dollar import in this and we have 51 billion US dollar current deficit in them. So we just wanted the help of the stakeholders in the private sector. We need to take action about them in order to develop capability of investment and manufacturing. And these products will be the champions of the years to come. We are exerting our efforts and we expect more support from the industry. So in the public authority, the attitude is super favorable for the investors. On different occasions, we meet the industry, our door is wide open to them. Most of the time, we don't wait for them to come. We visit them, we go to them. And we have a globally difficult 10 years ahead. And we need your support in order to turn this crisis into an opportunity for us. Next year, we will start again our calls for proposals. And one call can be dedicated to the wind energy, that's possible. The only thing you need to, you need to do is just come to us. And we can also make some calls which is going to trigger other clusters. So we need to, we need to take actions in order to grow this sector. We are ready to work this. It's very easy for me to say good things because we are not directly responsible. This is the area. This is the area which is directly relevant to the Ministry of Trade, actually. But about Turk Eximbank, the pressure, power of the private sector is important here. There is a resource which is given to the private sector, but there is a natural limit of this. But this is a cake. And which amount of cake will go to which sector? This is totally dependent on your efforts. If you want to be the engine in Turkish economy, then you can make your own pressure in order to get more share from that cake. Yesterday, you said something in Berlin, in a meeting which was attended by our ministry. It was Turkish-German Energy Forum. And in that meeting, an investor from Germany said something. They said they needed to open the channels of Europe to Turkey. Otherwise, they cannot make competition with the Far East. I totally agree with this. And we should also exert efforts in order to activate all our channels at the level of European Union. And we can get results out of this. Currently, there are European companies who already have investments in Turkey. And I believe that they can give further support to this process. And also, all together, we can do it with other financial institutions. This totally depends on your power. And we will always be with you as the Ministry of Industry. For Çandarlı Port, Mr. Minister said there are three alternatives. So maybe we can ask this question to you. What do we need to expect from your ministry about the Çandarlı Port? Actually, Mustafa Bey made emphasis on profit. And I will just use this as reference. Çandarlı Port is considered as an investment which has good potential for this region. And the main element of this potential is actually regarding taking the investments in the wind energy industry to the world. Maybe 20, 25% of the port traffic, if we establish the port here, will be taken by your industry. But you know, port is a very significant investment. How can we make it possible to realize this investment and to operate it on the long term? It seems that it would be much more advantageous for it to become a private sector investment rather than a public sector investment. And our colleagues have made a study. Just behind that port on the territory, we can organize an industrial zone. I do not want to dwell on the figures, but it can be a 1.5 million square meter hall dedicated to wind energy. And it can be the wind energy organized industrial zone. This is a draft currently. If it happens, actually, the value of this organized industrial zone will be very high. But somebody should take the lead. So somebody should say that, yes, as an organized industrial zone, we can operate it. We can attract investment here. And we can also engage into or to become a partner of the port investment. So there are different, there are various alternatives which have already been mentioned by Mr. Minister. Turep is a very strong association. If Turep takes such an initiative, as the Ministry of Industry and Technology, as you know, we are the ministry establishing to organize industrial zones. We have 29 zones here. It's, and we also discuss, we still discuss the organized industrial zone. But it can be an industrial zone. Expropriation can be made here. And the port investment can be considered in the same package with the organized industrial zone investment. So this is an alternative. Probably, there will be interest of the domestic and international investors. And our colleagues from the Presidential Office of Investments are here. But when you say that somebody should come and make the investment in the port, it takes more courage. Somebody should come and make this port investment plus 1.5 million square meter organized industrial zone can also be organized. When you make this combination, that courage level may not need to be so high. As the Ministry of Industry and Technology, we would like to accelerate this process. We see the capability of our industry. We want them to increase their capability. We want them to have offshore capability. There are foreign investment in our country, in this field. We want them to become more. And whenever we meet the manufacturers, we see that logistic is now a limitation. They say that, yes, we can manufacture it, but we can, we cannot, when we take it to the port, we cannot find a slot in the port, they say. Actually, naturally, the geography here, the terrain here is very favorable. And Mr. Minister made this advice to you, to take initiative. And the ball is in your hands now. Thank you. It's been very nice to see and hear this. Abdullah Bey, the final question to you. Will there be any tender next year without the storage, I mean, or the offshore? When do we need to expect it? Regarding the offshore, we made a trial back in the past. You remember it. And we did not receive any application, mostly, most probably because of the low price limit. So we still continue to conduct our studies in terms of determination of the right places. So once we finish the studies, we would like to work with it. And we do not, we will not have any year without YK. And maybe we can improve the conditions of these tenders. We can make them much more favorable for the industry. Of course, new YKs will come every year. So this is in line with our plan. Next year, we will have it. The other year, we will have it. So we will have this kind of competitions, tenders regularly. Because we need energy very urgently, new capacity amounts in order to ensure that they can be commissioned much more swiftly. Because when you get a license, first, it takes time to start to operate it. But many power plants have the capability to increase their capacities. And it takes a shorter time rather than getting a license from scratch. And this can contribute into accommodation of our energy need much more swiftly. So so far, we have always concentrated on the capacity increase. And we have a project portfolio. And 40,000 megawatt of this portfolio is about capacity increases. So as much as possible, we want to increase the capacities so that they can be commissioned as soon as possible. But of course, in 2023 and 2024, there will be YK competitions. Fatih Bey and Abdullah Bey, I would like to thank you so much on behalf of Turep and on behalf of the audience. I am not going to ask this question because all the questions came from our industry. Now, we will come back at 1:15 PM. So we are just giving a break now. Thank you.